We're bringing tonight's November twentieth Planning Commission. And we will call the meeting, or and you'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Stimson?
Here.
Ware?
Here.
Conigan?
Here.
Aspinall?
Here.
Lindquist?
Here.
Grant?
Here.
Bruckner?
Here.
And Chair Trefflett?
Here. Thank you.
Can I get an approval for the agenda as written?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Support all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, we got you, okay. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing, amend planned unit development, twelve of twenty fourteen, wow, eleven years ago. The address is, well, let's fix the Culvers on between Marie Scramblers and the bank and the outlot. Who's got? Who's who's here to represent? Okay, you want to step up and give your name to the clerk, please?
Alanize Ember, Noah and Fraus Engineers, we're the civil engineer. Address is four, six, seven, 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 Woodward, Pontiac, I can give you a card.
Thank you. Anybody, can you hear?
No, it's it's very quiet in the crowd.
I don't think your voice is not coming through too loud.
I don't think any of them work.
Hello?
Nice and loud, because I was having an hard time hearing anybody. It's not.
Hello, hello, hello.
Okay, you want to go ahead and present your?
Yeah, sure, thank.
Plan?
Yeah, so this is the plan you guys saw last month as part of the PUD amendment. It's for proposed Culvers just west of the existing Comerica Bank and Burger King at the corner of Twelve Mile and Orchard Lake. We have taken some of the comments from last month into consideration and amended the site plan for some things that we'll get into as far as landscaping, architecture, stacking spaces in front of the drive, et cetera. We've also taken a look at the existing setbacks for those neighboring buildings, Starbucks being the one to the northeast, that's part of the same PUD, and then Burger King and Comerica Bank there as well. The main point, I think, that we were looking at was the amendment to the front setback, which was required to be a hundred feet, if I remember correctly, a hundred and twenty feet on a two-hundred-foot deep lot, so that that is the main kind of variance that we're looking for there. So our building is set at forty-four point seven feet. Comerica Bank and Burger King are approximately sixty-five feet, but they have parking in the front along Twelve Mile there. The Culvers site does not propose parking, it's just the stacking spaces for the drive-thru and the turnaround, kind of the drive-through bypass, so there shouldn't be any permanent vehicles in that front forty-five feet. The Starbucks, which is, you know, part of the same PUD, has a forty-five-foot setback, so very close to the forty-four seven that we're proposing. They also have parking within the front, within five feet of that right-of-way line, so we actually have a little bit more of a buffer between our right-of-way and that parking or that drive aisle that we're proposing there. That's really the main topics of concern. I guess the the stacking spaces got brought up as part of the drive off of Twelve Mile, so there's that boulevarded entrance off of Twelve Mile there. We took a look at that and added an island, kind of off the southwest corner of the building, if you're able to pull up the site plan. So there's the patio area right off the southwest corner, perfect, thank you, and then we've added an island there to maintain two-way drive access kind of around the the west side, but to force those cars that are sitting in that drive-through line to head north instead of west, so there shouldn't be any blocking of the driveway. Believe that is, that was all the concerns from the last meeting that we had had.
Anything else?
No, I think we're good.
This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing if somebody wants to comment on it, staff. Oh, I thought I was gonna, I was gonna hear him wrap, wrap it up. I don't care, go ahead, do whatever.
I can give a, go through the report and then we can hear from folks. Right, so I think we all know what site we're dealing with here. By by way of summary, I want to note that there are three things that are really being asked for here with regard to the planned unit development. So in the B four district, a drive-through restaurant generally wouldn't be permitted, and fast food wouldn't be permitted in a standalone building. It has to share a building with, there we go, it has to share a building with another use. So they are proposing it in a standalone building with a drive-through, therefore, those need to be added to the planned unit development agreement in order to permit this to happen. And then that setback that they're requesting relief from as well is the other thing that we're talking about. I'm going to get into a little bit of detail on a couple of things here. There's some informational items that I'll try to get through quickly, but there are a few substantial items that I want to talk about as well. So that front setback is forty-four point seven feet. They, what's that? Is somebody about to ask?
It was a cough, keep going.
Okay, sorry. And when we get down to the drive-in standards, so looking at items seven and eight in the letter here, we didn't see pedestrian access from the Twelve Mile sidewalk on the plans. And then when we get into the actual standards for how a drive-in is supposed to be designed, so there's a hundred and twenty-foot setback in the district, but there's also a sixty-foot setback that's typically required to a drive-through use, so that's also not being met here, which would require relief. And then there are order confirmation boards labeled on the plans that are on the south side of the building directed toward Twelve Mile Road, the pickup windows on the east The boards are typically not supposed to be in the front yard, so you're not supposed to be ordering or doing anything like that in the front yard based on our design standards for drive-throughs. They have, one thing I think is is useful here is it is just to kind of understand how this works operationally, too, because you'll note that when you get past the drive-through, there's like a window. Once you get past that, there's some spaces that are kind of distributed through that area beyond the window, and that's for people to kind of pull and wait for something to be brought out to them. So that is just an operational note I wanted to make. So one of the other things that we were noting is that we see five stacking spaces before the order confirmation board, but not before the other board, the ordering board. Two of those spaces are partially on parcel A, there are eight other spaces that are shown, and some of those are the ones beyond the window where you'd pull over and wait for something to come out to you. And then I did have an analysis of All Street Parking as well, because there was some kind of questions about how much parking actually needs to be provided here. So there's a pretty lengthy breakdown in the the letter of how we look at parking here. They had done a breakdown based on the gross floor area of the building and just dividing by thirty. The usable floor area is the standard we use. When we got this, the floor plan, we were able to break that down, and we found that the requirement for this building, if it was just standalone on its own site, is a little less than half of the number that they had provided, so their their calculation was for a hundred and ten spaces, we came up with fifty-three. This is part of an overall center. These uses don't all have their highest occupancy at the same time, it's one of the advantages of a shopping center. So ultimately, what we did is we applied the shopping center standard to the entire center, and we found that the parking after this is constructed is going to be adequate to meet the ordinance without any kind of exception granted under the PUD. So that's the the conclusion that we landed on with regard to parking, is that they're going to have enough to meet the ordinance. Finally, we did, we did need some corrections to the lighting plan, that's not unusual. We noted some things about the building materials based on the design standards that were recently adopted. It seems like the left and right elevations, the labels are switched on those, too, just for everyone's awareness. There is also a window coverage standard in our design standards, separate from relief that gets granted under a planned unit development. The Planning Commission actually has the ability to grant relief from building material requirements when it finds that the materials are consistent with surrounding development. The waiver would achieve a specific architectural objective, and that compliance with the standard will result in a practical difficulty, so that's something that you need to discuss amongst yourselves. And finally, I wanted to make a couple notes about the landscaping, just because they're, they are asking to put this drive-through closer to the right-of-way than would typically be permitted, and also you typically couldn't put a drive-through here. So right now, there's a, there's four trees down in the planting strip along the sidewalk there. I think it would be reasonable, because you've got a loading area and some stacking leans and things going in here, regardless of whether or not the ordering boards get moved to the other side of the building, I think it would be reasonable to ask for some additional landscaping along Twelve Mile there in return for what they're requesting to do here, because there is going to be a lot of vehicular activity there in that, on that east side of that building, and I do think that some additional screening would be warranted there. Any questions for me?
Barry?
I know you pointed out that our antiquated drive-through restaurant rules, that it's a standalone building, but so is the Burger King and the and the coffee place, they're both standalone buildings, so is that a big problem?
Well, one of those is in this development, so obviously there's precedent for permitting it.
Does anybody know what's going to happen to the bank? Because I assume there, it's a Comerica that's being bought out, and there's a fifth third bank about a mile down, Twelve Mile Road at Farmington Road, so is that space going to be available for maybe putting a restaurant there instead?
We'd be speculating, I have no insight. I will note that engineering would like that site to connect into the driveway to the east of this site, so that you can get vehicles out of the bank without having yet another driveway onto Twelve Mile, but in, obviously, this site can't do anything about that. It's just something that that engineering is requesting, and, you know, these these folks are not, are not adding another driveway to to Twelve Mile, they're using existing driveways, which is definitely a positive thing. We know that there's backups and other issues around this intersection, so we were not looking for another driveway there.
I was missing a page that you were showing on the screen there, but I saw your remarks about the EFS. I guess we can talk to them about?
Yes.
Something else besides EFS. We'll do that later.
Okay, you're done?
Yeah, that's all, unless somebody else has another question.
Sure, Steve. Yeah, has there been a traffic study done around what this will do for coming out on the Twelve or out on the Orchard Lake and?
They they have produced a traffic study. It was reviewed, I didn't review it, it was reviewed by engineering, I don't know if you guys wanted to comment on that at all.
Sean from engineering, but, so, we did, I met with Mark this morning talking about it, so it's just a couple of comments that our consultant had regarding the traffic study in general, so I think he's planning to get that out and ship it back to whatever questions that we may have regarding the traffic study.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to approve this without the traffic, knowing the traffic impact, though. Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay. You can sit down, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just so you know, our owner and traffic engineer are here as well in case there's questions for them.
Yeah, I think one thing I would say with regard to traffic is that Twelve Mile and Orchard Lake already has a very low level of service, so I'll let their traffic engineer speak to what the effect of this will be on it. I know that there was some discussion of how vehicles back up leaving this site as well, so I'll also let them address that, but those were kind of the two main things, is how does traffic back up in front of this site along Twelve Mile, and then how does traffic back up within the site when you're, when it's at its busiest and people are exiting.
Are you prepared for the traffic study?
Yes.
Okay, please go. Give your name to the clerk, please.
Luke Liu, last name's L I U, with AECOM, address is thirty-nine, five, seventy-five, Lewis Drive, L E W I S, in Novi.
And what's the name of the company?
A E C O M.
Thank you.
All right. In response to the question about the driveway access to Twelve Mile, the traffic study was completed by us, and there were traffic modeling to show the additional queue length from the driveway for getting out onto Twelve Mile. In the morning peak, the model is showing additional queue length of about forty-nine feet, so that's roughly about two to three cars. That's the the maximum queue expected for the peak hour. And the same measure for the afternoon is about thirty-four additional feet, so that's again about two cars, as expected from from this generation.
Anything else?
That's all, I would want to provide some response to the question, nothing else, unless there are questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, as I said, it's a public hearing, if anybody wishes to speak on this matter, come up and, yes, come on up and give, give your name to the clerk, please.
My name's Randy Carron, C A R R O N. You got my home address, or? So I'm here, we own the Scramblers Restaurant, right in front of that place, so can you use Scramblers' address?
Yes.
I don't know what it is.
I was just going to say that you're representing Scramblers.
Thank you. Yeah.
Right, Twelve Mile and Orchard.
So, thanks for letting me come in here and let me talk. We've owned that, it's going to be fifteen years in April that we've been open, so we've seen a lot going on in that center there. We're in the process of starting a remodel inside, it's gotten a little tired inside there. But before we invest in that, we found out about this about two or three weeks ago, and I'm hearing about the the studies in there, but that that place will put us out of business, a hundred percent. Parking, come by on a Sunday, it's jammed, you guys know, I mean, I hope you know that, if you've been there sometimes, but parking's a big issue there. Even at weekdays, at noon, those two or three rows are always full, not just for us, but for the Chinese place, the, there's a Korean restaurant there, but there, it's it's just jammed there, and on the weekends, we're, that drives our business, Saturday and Sunday. So it's a big, it would be a huge impediment to our business if that goes in there, and I'm not sure why you're looking at, given variances, it seems like there's a lot of good spots to put a place on Orchard Lake that doesn't require just taking all our parking away in front of our building. I've tried to talk to the landlord about it, he should be here representing us. Unfortunately, he did not notify any of the tenants. They're in the process of trying to sell that whole property, I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but, so they don't really have our interest, so I took it upon myself to meet with one of your representatives, the lady was very helpful to give us information about this meeting and that. So I just wanted to let you know, the other problem there is that when you go, when you pull in, even now, you have the two driveways, there's cars pulling in and going out, and it's backed up a lot right there, and then they're going to come in and turn right and go around and come back out that same one driveway. If they had their own egress, like you mentioned the bank, that would be a perfect spot to put it, they got their own everything, it'd be great there, but if you don't add an entrance, I don't know, there's going to be people backed up onto Twelve Mile, people are trying to cut across, leaving. You can see our customers are always struggling to get out of there, so, anyway, I wanted to let you know that we love being here, we love the city, we have a good business going. I told John after you're done, you guys want to come in for on a Saturday or a weekday meeting, it's on me, you can bring your whole group over there. I'm a little nervous, because, you know, we've been there a long time, and this is just like, screw you.
You're out of, you're out of time.
All right.
Okay?
Okay.
This will go to city council.
A what?
This, this motion ends up going to city council for a vote.
Okay.
So you'll be in this room again, talking about that.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, sorry, I should have started the clock so you knew, you had three minutes.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, back to the commission for questions. Yes?
I just have, I just wondered, have you guys looked into some other locations within Farmington Hills? Because I've passed a few and said, wow, this would be great for Carvers. I love Carvers, but I just, I I just think it really, it's tight. I do and have gone to Scramblers and trying to get in and out, and people coming over from the Starbucks and trying to get out of Twelve Mile, I, I, it's just hard for me to see, see the space, as it being good space, or it's like tight.
It is.
And I think there's some, so many good places for you guys that?
We, we fall under restrictions from other locations, we have to stay within like a five-mile radius, so we've been limited in the sites that we could look at, and this is, for us, ideally with the traffic in the area, the people going through the city, would be ideal for us to, to invest this type of money, to have the traffic that's in that area, would be?
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ronald Sessie, hopefully, owner of this site.
Okay.
Anything else? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If the Arby's closed across the street, would that be helpful?
That's the beauty of doing stuff like this, like, like you mentioned the Comerica Bank, like, unfortunately, for us to be able to wait, and hopefully, those things open up.
It's not, hopefully, it's closed, or closing, so I was just wondering if you are aware of that.
So it hasn't been listed on real estate, so I don't know, I couldn't answer that. Obviously, yeah, that would be ideal, but we're unaware of it, so I want to be able to answer that truthfully and say, yeah, like, it would make, it would make sense.
Just wondering if it would be a consideration?
Yeah.
If that was available.
It'd be, it would make things, I don't know, I don't even, I don't even know what the square footage of it, because then we also have square footage requirements for our buildings, so I don't know if the building would meet the requirements that Culvers has on us, so a lot of those things, so sites, we have to go by what Culvers requires from us as far as the sites, the size of them, access for the drive-through and stuff like that, so it, ultimately, it's not always up to us if it might be an ideal site for us, it might be an ideal site in theory, but when Culvers comes back to us, they'll say it doesn't meet our requirements, and then we'd have to wait around and look for another site, and that's why this site, from Culvers' requirement, meets all of their requirements, and then now we're here to find out if it meets your guys' requirements.
Did you see, there's an area at Ten Mile, Ten Mile, right where Grand River splits? I was over by there, and I thought about you guys, and I was like, this would?
So I, I used to own the supermarket in Redford, Spartan Foods, over on Grand River and Beach, so I'm familiar with the area, so when this?
Yeah, this is Farmington Hills, right?
Yeah.
Where it kind of splits Ten Mile before you get to Hagerty, there's some empty lots over there, I think it wasn't a McDonald's over there at one time?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so right over there, there's that vacant lot, it's like, wow, this would be perfect for you guys.
I don't know, haven't, once we had this site, we honestly stopped looking at other sites, so I don't know what's out there at this moment.
Take a look, it's at Ten, Ten Mile, it's Farmington Hills.
I'll write it down.
Kristen?
Can you speak to, like, your high-density times at your restaurant, and if they would coincide with Scramblers, or would they offset?
I, I, we're not here to, like, we don't do breakfast and anything of that sort, obviously, you guys, as a Scramblers', I assume a brunch location?
What are your, what are your daily hours?
Our, our high, we open at ten, ten or ten-thirty depends, most of my restaurants are ten-thirties. So our peak times at Culvers are typically twelve to two, and then for lunch, and then our peak times are like six to eight. And nowadays, with, we introduced DoorDash and Uber Eats about a year ago, it's taken away a lot of our drive-through sales, we've seen a dip in drive-through sales at our restaurants, because more people are saying, why would I bother driving out, I'll just DoorDash or Uber it, so I've noticed that at our two restaurants, that drive-through sales have dipped, dine-in have stayed the same, drive-through have dipped, and then Uber sales and DoorDash have been considerable amounts for us, so.
Barry?
Joe, this is, in this plan, this is an outlot, right, outlot, is it outlot B or something like that?
Yeah, it's, it's considered lot B, it's a separate lot from the rest, but it is part of the overall planning.
I know it's part of the overall thing, but it was actually designated to build something there, because it was, they broke it off as an outlot, so that usually means they're going to put something there, so leave it as a parking slot.
And I think it was twenty-fourteen, there was a plan proposed for a retail outlot here, I don't recall how many tenant spaces it was, but it was, it was a retail building that was essentially aligned with the bank next door. I took a glance at those plans, because they were in our archive. I took a glance at those plans, because they were in our archive, when I first started looking at this. But that was, it was about 10 years ago, 10, 11 years ago, something like that.
The other question I have is for the proponent. There was a statement, and I, I didn't see it in the plan, but I saw it in the, in Giffords Webster's documentation that you were planning on using EPIS. We have restrictions on use of EPIS now in our town, so could you use something else?
We'd be, we'd be open to looking into other building materials for the building. So we've, in, um, in different sites, we've had a change based on city requirements. So it's something we definitely, obviously, would look into to meet your requirements.
For some reason, I don't have, I don't have that in the pack, my packet, but unless it just came out real dark, what I have is not dark.
You should actually ask them for color renderings of their building. It's pretty unusual to get black and white renderings for-
Yeah, we can't tell what color it's going to be, and I don't think you're gonna be making it black and white.
No, that is not, there's gonna be a lot of blue on it, that's for sure. So that I can guarantee.
But again, we recently changed our, some of our building requirements, and EPIS was reduced because we've had problems with some of our, some of the buildings in the city that had EPIS, it falls apart after a while. It's not, it's not, it's easily messed up, it crushes, so that's-
Sure, my man Alan takes care of that. I don't, I wouldn't know about, so some, uh, it doesn't matter. One of my, one of my buildings is EPIS, one of them is brick, so it all depends on city requirements.
Like, like the brick idea better.
Yeah. Costs more, but, I mean-
But it, it lasts longer.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes?
Yes, Mr. Sessi, just to understand, you're, you are the, you'll be the franchisee for this, for this property? And aren't, aren't there other plans for other Culvers within Farmington Hills? I thought, no?
Not in Farmington Hills that I know of, because we have a five mile radius that, so, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Dale?
Sure.
I move that, I move to recommend to City Council that the application to amend PUD 12 2014 and revise Site Plan 67 2025 dated October 28, 2025 submitted by Ronald J. Sessi be approved because it, because the plans are consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the master plan and applicable provisions of the planned unit development option in Section 34.3.20 of the zoning ordinance subject to the following findings and conditions. The commission has no objection to the proposed relief from the following zoning ordinance standards, which will be addressed in conjunction with the final PUD, PUD plan and the PUD agreement. A, 34-3.1.26 permit, uh, drive-through, excuse me, permit a drive-in restaurant that is not permitted in the B4 district. B, 34-4.27.2, permit fast food in a standalone building. C, 34-3.1.24. dot, point E, setback relief from, from front, front setback. Reduction from 120, 120 feet to 44.7 feet. D, 34-5.20, relief from the design standards for building materials as outlined in the Giffords Webster's November 12, 2025 review. And E, 34-5.20, relief from the design standards for percentage of window coverage on ground floor, on ground floor as outlined in the Gifford Webster's November 12, 2025 review. Conditions, all outstanding issues identifies and gift, identified in the Gifford Webster's November 12, 2025 review shall be addressed to the reasonable satisfaction of the city planner. All outstanding issues identified in the city engineers, uh, November 6, 2025, inner-office correspondence shall be addressed to the reasonable satisfaction of the city engineer. And all outstanding issues identified in the fire marshals, October 31, 2025, inner-office correspondence shall be addressed to the reasonable satisfaction of the fire marshal. And I would recommend that, that the proponent get with the planning staff regarding landscaping along 12 Mile, 12 Mile to provide a sufficient buffer and screening to the proposed development.
I wanted to add the color renditions.
Building materials? Do you wanna add anything?
Do you wanna, you'll-
Okay.
No comments on building materials.
Who supported the motion?
Is there a second?
I support.
Okay. Yes?
My only question is, uh, to the, to Dale, is this your, your relief from the design standards for building materials? Did you wanna allow EPIS?
As you recall, I didn't support that amendment to ordinance anyhow, so my, that's where I'm at.
Doesn't bother you.
Yeah, doesn't bother me. But if somebody wants the commission, comes to some sort of consensus on it, I'm flexible.
Steve?
Yeah. I, I'm gonna vote against this motion. I, I'd love to see a Culvers in Farmington Hills, but I think you're really jamming this into a tight spot. I don't like having the stacking in the front. I definitely don't think there's enough stacking. I've been to enough Culvers, and I went to one this weekend, and I'd say the stacking was about nine cars deep. Basically, to avoid that, I went inside. It was so long. I think this is gonna make the site totally unavocable. The, the traffic flow in that entire site is going to be just too tight. I, I, you know, I can't support this.
I won't be able to support it either, based on the saying.
Anyone else? Okay, but moved your supporter, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
I need to maybe do a roll call.
Yes, you better.
Definitely.
Stimson?
Nay.
Ware?
Nay.
Conigan?
Yes.
Aspenal?
Yes.
Lundquist?
Nay.
Grant?
Nay.
Brickner?
Yes.
And Chair Trufflet?
Yes.
So, we have one. We have three nays, so the motion passed, so-
Thank you. When is the next public hearing in December for this?
The City Council meeting in December has already been noticed, so it'll have to be the January meeting that it goes to City Council.
That will be dependent on the outcome of that landscaping discussion, too, I would assume, that was recalled for in the motion.
Yeah, I mean, the, make, as the maker of the motion, yeah, I would expect that the staff will get with the proponent. You work that issue out before you forward it on to council. That's our intent, that that be resolved.
Can I get a quick clarification? So for the January meeting, what is the plan date that we are trying to meet for that? Just so we can make sure we, we coordinate.
We meet on the second and fourth Mondays.
Is it two weeks before?
January 12th is the meet, the first City Council meeting. January 26th is the second of that month.
So, if we wanted to do the meeting on the 12th, what is the drop dead date for the plan revisions? Just wanna make sure we get it into you in time.
I think December 1st, we would need to, and we're talking about just the revised landscape plan, correct? Yes, that we can review and approve.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is site plans.
This committee can approve that?
Yes.
Now, I gotta go to City Council?
Yes. I'm not disagreeing, I'm not disagreeing with you, but-
So, I'll go on board and play. I don't have a bunch of sites, we might have to move out of this place.
Okay.
They're putting us out of business.
Well-
We're just doing out there a whole lot. I don't know why you're approving it. He can go anywhere.
Okay, well, now we're done with this.
It's been there 15 years.
Yeah.
I was there when you opened. I guess we don't get to go, you know, get to meet in the restaurant.
Does someone know the password for this? I've got a short presentation.
Try password.
It should be, um-
Oh, there it is. Okay, thank you.
Bear with me real quick. I'm a happy man.
Who's he yelling at?
All right, well, let's see if I can get these on the big screens. All right, can I do that?
The controller in the box is gonna switch it over for you.
Wonderful, thank you. We got help. Sorry, my system's not this high-tech at the office, it's just one plug, so.
Diane, I noticed that 12 Mile is missing off the address on here. The word 12 Mile, 12?
The address is 29150 West 12 Mile.
Yeah, that's saying West, West 12 is missing.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Not, not on there, but on here.
All right, then am I able to get this screen pulled up, or, oh, here we go, wonderful. All right, well, sorry for the technical difficulties. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. It is a pleasure to be in front of you once again this evening. Again, Aaron Schaefer with Schaefer Development. I am joined alongside my father, Stephen Schaefer, and I have two gentlemen here from MI Homes, Frank Lucido, as well as Brandon Guest. If you have any questions regarding specifically the homes, I would encourage that you direct those questions to MI Homes. Before I jump into the presentation, I wanted to talk about, about a couple of items in the Giffords Webster review letter. Some of the items bolded in green. The first item was the building height. We've talked about this at numerous meetings, but the building height is under the 30-feet requirement, or 26 feet 6 inches from the center line of the roof line for the two-story townhouses. Additionally, on numerous occasions, I believe every single presentation I've made to Planning Commission and City Council, I've included floor plans, renderings, and elevations. I'm proud to share the latest and greatest elevations at the very end of this presentation, which I think will be a very welcome change compared to what we had presented to you in the past. So again, I don't wanna bore you with the details too much. Many of you are familiar with the site. Again, we're on the northeast quadrant of 12 Mile and Middle Belt Road, just due east of the Montessori School that was formerly known as Echo Park. So again, the property is roughly 4.55 acres. It is now a planned unit development, but this gives you an idea of the property in relation to where we are, to some of the commercial uses, the residential, and most importantly, Wood Creek, our neighbors to the east of the subdivision. So again, just wanted to provide a high-level overview of all of the meetings when we first introduced this project to Planning Commission to tonight, site plan approval. Back in October of 2024, we received our qualification for the PUD option. Moving to April of this year, we secured a site plan review, and in May was the public hearing for the site plan review. We got approved unanimously on July by City Council, and we're in front of you this evening for the site plan approval. On July, we discussed the planned unit development agreement, and there were no outstanding items in there. If you recall, there was a 2001 shared access agreement between Mr. Yusuf, the underlying landowner, and Echo Park, who was the former school operating before Aim Academy, where it did contemplate that shared access along the eastern property line that is still being shown on these plans here. That will be gated by a Knox box, as requested by the Fire Department, and is only for life and fire emergencies. So again, that is not something that the residents of this community will be able to utilize. They will be utilizing the curb cut along 12 Mile Road. But again, we're meeting the spirit and intent of what was in the engineering and the Fire Department review letters. So again, just wanted to provide you a side-by-side of the site plan. No changes have been made since you last saw this in May, with the exception of the amenity. If you recall, we originally had it on that Easterly building. I can't see the building number, but it's not the first five-plex unit, but the second five-plex unit here. We had an amenity right here, a nice bench overlook, that has been relocated to right here, along the 12 Mile frontage. I apologize, it is quite small. If you have any questions regarding that, I do have the site plan submittal, and I can go right to the landscape plan page so that you can see that in greater detail. But again, the most important thing, what really makes me excited, is that this development has almost 63% open space because of those large northerly buffers because of the fall of the site. If you recall, from the back of those townhomes to the northern property line, there's roughly about 40 feet of fall there. It's really a pretty serene natural area with views of the Pebble Creek. We're not looking to do any disturbance to that area behind those units, besides what is required from a grading perspective. We do have a stormwater basin that will outlet eventually into the Pebble Creek at an agricultural rate. So any questions you have on that, I would defer to engineering or to MI Homes if you have any specific questions. There were five conditions at the July City Council hearing. I'm proud to announce that we have met all five conditions, but I will bring them to your attention. My apologies, I'm gonna read word for word from the screen. Condition one, that the proponent discuss the possibility of a fence on the eastern property line next to Mr. Levy's property. And that is a decision be made about the fence that satisfies Mr. Levy as to whether he wants a fence or not. The decision is up to Mr. Levy. We will be providing a consistent fence along the northern property line to Mr. Payne, as well as the entire eastern property line to Mr. Levy. Additionally, we have met with the Levy family on numerous occasions, most recently, once the leaves fell, to get a better idea of where we want to reposition some landscaping specifically. They had requested that we plant some additional evergreens, make some changes, so that they've got foliage on all four seasons, which will absolutely accommodate. We will be going out to the site later, now that all the leaves are gone, to just decide, do we need to maybe move a couple of trees around here or there? But at the end of the day, we're not making any major changes to what is on the landscape plan, unless it's something that the Levy family would like to do. Condition two, we've already talked about that. We moved the pocket park from the eastern property line up to the north along that 12 Mile sidewalk, so it creates a more, you know, a more, it's more apparent, you see it, versus it being tucked away along the eastern property line. Condition three, that an easement be placed next to the stub road, extending to the eastern property line for utilities and road in case Mr. Levy decides to develop his property in the future. We are more than willing to accommodate that. Our plans do currently show that. I know there were some comments in the engineering review letter. So if there's any specific questions about that, MI Homes is more than happy to answer it. But it is our intention to stop the road slightly short of the eastern property line, bring all the utilities to the property line. And the reason we're stopping that road slightly short is to allow that robust landscaping to mature. But rest assured, there will be an easement in place, so should that property get redeveloped in the future, the easement is there to facilitate that connection. Condition three, we talked about, again, this is the shared access agreement that was signed back in 2001. I don't wanna bore you too much with it, but it talked about, listen, if, God forbid, anything happened to Aim Academy or the Yusuf property along 12 Mile Road, that there's this shared access along that shared, I'm sorry, it's our western property line, Aim's eastern property line. But you can see here that the, the, the folks at the city of Farmington Hills signed this back in the early 2000s, Echo Park, the former school user, and the Yusuf family. Condition number four, that the proponent meet with the engineering department to review the traffic report and accommodate any of the engineering department's recommendations regarding traffic, whether any sort of D cell lane is needed. Back in August, we had the opportunity to meet with fire, engineering, and traffic departments to review the traffic impact study. We did submit a revised study based on their recommendations, and all departments confirmed that no additional traffic improvements are deemed necessary, especially with all the new work that's been done on 12 Mile, with that dedicated left-hand turn lane. Condition number five, that the proponent meet with fire and engineering regarding the fire department and engineering's letter advising the need for a cul-de-sac to better understand where they are referencing the need for a cul-de-sac. And if they want the cul-de-sac to be placed at the end of the stub road on the eastern side of the property, at that point, this PUD is negated and has come back to council for further potential revisions. Again, we met back with these departments on Aug- Again, we met back with these departments on August twentieth. Departments confirmed their support for the T-street layout, again, that T connection to AIM Academy. In addition, that access has been documented dating back to two thousand and one with that shared access agreement. I think where the issue was is on one of the older plan iterations. We didn't have it shaded out clear enough, that connection. On the revised plan, it had it, and there were no issues there. So again, engineering's here, but we have met the spirit and intent of that condition. Okay, so the most fun part of the presentation, the revised renderings and elevations. This is a little bit different compared to the modern farmhouse elevation we had shared to you in the past. We feel this is a lot more modern, a lot nicer of a look. We'll have a more traditional brick on that first floor where the garages and the doors are. And you can see we have a combination of a lap as well as a board and batten siding. You can see what the rear elevation looks like. We provided some additional diversity. These are representative of what a four-plex unit would look like, but again, we only have five and six plexes on the plan. Here's a five-plex, so this is what those, those northwest units will look like that run perpendicular of Twelve Mile Road, so you can get an idea of what they look like. And then again, these are the floor plans. Again, this was added into the presentation based on Giffords Webster report. I did send this to Charmaine, and I did request that she forward this off to Giffords Webster so that they have those renderings and floor plans in their records. Okay, finally, this gives you a better idea of the type of facade materials we are looking to use with the brick, with the roof shingles, as well as the siding on the front sides and rear elevations. Finally, before I move over to Q and A, I want to show you what that park amenity looks like along Twelve Mile Road. I'm just gonna go all the way to the very end. Okay, this gives you an idea of what that bench and pedestrian amenity will look like along the Twelve Mile frontage, right here. So I want to sincerely thank you for the time this evening, and I will open up the floor to any questions or comments you may have. Thank you so much for the time.
Questions for Mr. Schaefer?
Question for the attorney, though.
Okay.
Question for the attorney?
Yes.
So on the agenda, it says we're approving a site plan, but there are also other features as part of the PUD that, that have been presented tonight in terms of features and whatever. So materials, that sort of thing. So that seems to me goes beyond just simple site plan tonight. I guess what I'm asking is, what are we approving?
So, interesting question. I was just asking Diane here, is, is the PUD agreement done?
Yes, the PUD agreement has been completed and submitted. I sent it, or I submitted it probably about a week and a half or two weeks ago.
But it hasn't actually been approved by city council yet.
It was approved by council.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, at the last meeting.
So, Mr. Chair, I guess this is just FYI, the other stuff that we heard about tonight?
So the site plan that you're approving is the site plan following PUD approval? And the renderings and things like that are?
Done.
Are what they are?
Okay, so it's not up to us now to tweak that? That's set? We're just looking at the site plan?
Although, and I guess we'll do this outside this meeting, I guess I was asking Diane, the planner, whether the new facades and renderings are consistent with the written agreement. But you're approving the site plan, so you don't need to worry about that.
Okay.
We'll worry about that.
That's part of the presentation. That was my confusion.
Yes.
Just the site plan we're looking at tonight.
Thanks.
That other stuff's taken care of by a higher pay grade.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Barry?
Not for, not for him.
Oh.
Your dad's probably very proud of your presentation, by the way. So, good job.
Good job.
Thank you very much. I love to see him smile.
Wasn't smiling that much, though, I was watching.
I was, I was actually looking at him thinking, what is he thinking about his son right now?
He's thinking I could do it better if I was up here, because I have the silver tongue.
I've been seeing him do presentations for about thirty years. You did a very good job, by the way.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'll be humble.
Okay. I have a question for Joe.
Question?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in, just noting that really what we were doing here is, when they went through the planned unit development process, they were not seeking actual final site plan approval concurrent with their planned unit development approval. So they've got their planned unit development approval, they've got their agreement approved by council. So what we were doing is we were checking the plans for consistency with what was approved as part of the planned unit development and the agreement. And I'll just, I guess I'll just go ahead and say, we found the plans to be consistent with the approval that was granted by council and previously the planning commission, and that the conditions that council set forth were reflected on the plans. They had moved that amenity area, they had the easements that were shown. So we found that it was consistent with the council approval, and therefore it is an approvable site plan at this point. And, and as far as the elevations and things, planning, planning has to have that on file. So if these are the final elevations, then that would be sufficient for, for planning, of course, provided, of course, that they're consistent.
Again, this, this was emailed to Charmaine, so she has, she has.
Yep.
And they'll have to check to make sure internally whether or not it's consistent with the written PUD.
Exactly, yeah.
I, I have a question on the Giffords Webster, Giffords Webster report and the density on number two.
Mm-hmm.
The math doesn't seem to be right. It's, it's still below the RC one, a mile, and this is one hundred and four rooms, but for some reason it said, it's, you show ninety-four rooms and it's really ninety-six. I, let's, I, I just pulled out my calculator to make sure I can't.
There's a little bit of a range possible, because some of the units have like an option to be a three-bedroom and some, some will be twos. So I think we're just trying to show the possible range there.
That's the first time I've seen you guys do math wrong, but you said you had, you had three-bedroom, twelve three-bedroom units, and you treat them as four, that's forty-eight, and you had sixteen two-bedrooms, which are three, three rooms. You multiply that, that's forty-eight. You add them together, it's ninety-six. You guys put ninety-four. But again, it's still under a hundred and four, which is what the max was for an RC one. You're gonna pull out your calculator? Then it also shows you I read the thing, how's that?
Right.
Anybody else got questions? I'm ready for a motion, if you are.
Diane, I'll do it.
You gonna do it?
Sure.
Okay.
Got the right one. I move the site plan sixty-five dash ten dash twenty twenty five is revised, as revised October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, submitted by Schaefer Development LLC. Be approved because it appears to meet all applicable requirements of zoning chapters subject to the following conditions and determinations. Conditions, one, all outstanding issues identified in the Giffords Webster November ten, twenty twenty five review shall be addressed to the reasonable satisfaction of the city planner. All outstanding issues identified in the city engineers, November eleventh, twenty twenty five, inter-office correspondence should be addressed to the reasonable satisfaction of the city engineer. And three, all outstanding issues identified in the fire marshals, October to thirtieth, twenty twenty five, inter-office correspondence shall be addressed to the reasonable satisfaction of the fire marshal. Do you gotta read the next one? Determinations, the advocate submitted a revised site plan that addresses conditions of city council's July fourteenth, twenty twenty five approval of PUD one, twenty twenty five, that the four-foot-high vinyl-coated black chain-link fence proposed on the eastern property line next to Mr. Levy's properties is desired and appears to satisfy Mr. Levy. A total of a hundred and ninety-five trees are required to be replaced, and a hundred and eighteen trees may be counted towards replacement, which leaves seventy-seven trees to be paid into the fund at four hundred dollars per tree. That's it.
Is there support? Second? Supported by Dale. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
I will thank you very much this evening. I don't think I'll be in front of you again this year, so I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, as well as Happy New Year. Thank you so much for the time tonight.
See you next year.
Take care.
Good luck.
Of course, the other question is, is why didn't our monitors work? Now they work.
Worked?
Yeah.
No, they didn't.
All right, what's next on the agenda?
The bureau, this, they're not matching up, though.
It's coming from, coming from him. Maybe I hijacked your computers, I'm sorry.
I think so. He hacked in.
You'll hear from my lawyer. Okay. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes. I just want to make note.
Yes.
On the PUD review, the address is not complete, that's what I was.
Yeah, Twelve Mile, I said twelve got dropped there somehow.
Okay. Must have moved to accept the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and supported, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Units are approved.
And who's supported?
Here. Oh, Steve? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is public comments. Well, the entire public is gone.
We have a public.
The next is commissioner and staff comments. Yes, Barry?
There is a sign on Drake Road just north of Old Homestead that's covered up, and it was there to let us know that they were going to be closing Drake Road when they were working on the bridge at six ninety-six. It's now all covered up, but it's still sitting out there and it hasn't been touched. It's not one of the city signs. It is actually belongs to the, it's not the road commission neither, it's, it's the state of Michigan, those folks. And I would like to see someone take it down or get permission to take it down because it's been there. You've probably seen it.
Yes.
I know what you're talking about.
It's, it's been there for two years and it hasn't been used for a year and a half, so.
Is that something engineering can look into? Because you have connections with MDOT more than planning.
I mean, it might be State Barricade, which is the company that typically has it out there. So, yeah, I can probably see what Mark will say for city engineering, see what he says.
I actually already asked him.
Oh, you did?
But it doesn't help, it, it helps if I open my mouth. I know I said something to engineering and the next day they put the stripes on Drake Road.
Well, we, we do have a DPW and they have a yard, and they can probably just go pick it up and put it in the yard and call the state and tell them, come get it when they want it.
Right, and that'll probably be the next thing to do, is probably contact DPW.
Especially if it's covered.
You, you can use the posts on it to make a nice railroad tie connection to a garden.
Obstacle in the right of way, dangerous.
And I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, how's that?
Anybody other comments?
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Not supported.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.